Could I have everybody be seated, please? Just please be seated for a moment. What I'd like to do is I have the honor tonight of introducing the new mayor for the day for the city of Lowell, Anthony Late, of the Lowell Fire Department. How Anthony got here is last spring Lowell House had their fundraiser and part of the offering to raise money was who wanted to be mayor for the day. And Anthony bid for that position, that honor. And it started to get expensive and I have to personally thank Jody White from Lowell General Hospital, went to seat it and offered $700 for the position and offered it to Anthony to be able to be mayor for the day. And so that's, it's an honor to have Anthony here being mayor for the day. We started this morning on WCAP at 8:15 discussing fire safety and he had lunch with the city manager, again discussing fire safety, and he's here tonight also to discuss fire safety. So I just want to welcome Anthony Late to the city of Lowell as mayor for the day. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
So if I can have everyone stand for the prayer, please? Dear God, today, as this session opens, we pray that our presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. If I can have you remain standing, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice above. Thank you.
So if I can go ahead and have the city clerk call, roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Samaras, Counselor Sorillo, Counselor Conway, Counselor Elliott, Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia, Counselor Milanazzo, Counselor Moon, Acting Mayor Late.
Here. In addition to the roll call, I'd like to please have a moment of silence. Mayor Demaris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have a moment of silence and duck in the chambers for Dolores A. Dean Green. Dolores Dean Green, 87, a lifelong resident of Lowell, resided on Christian Hill in the Centerville section, passed away on Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. She was the beloved wife of William R. Bill Green, deceased, with whom she shared almost 63 years of marriage. One Lowell on September 25, 1931, Dolores was the eldest child of Edward and Marion C. Dean. She was a graduate of the Academy of Notre Dame in Tinsborough and retired from MIT Lincoln Lab in 1994. Dolores was a communicant of St. Michael Parish, Lowell, where she greatly impacted many lives through her activities as minister of communion, CCD teacher, and member of the choir. In addition, Dolores supported Bill when 35 years ago, when he established an annual golf tournament that has distributed more than 285 college scholarships for deserving high school seniors. Dolores was a past president of the Alumni Association of the Academy of Notre Dame and served the Duville Manor Foundation Board of Directors for several years. Dolores leaves a daughter, Suellen Green, and her husband, Dorado Perez Juist of Cape Nettic, Maine, a sister, Donna Brennan, and her husband, Daniel, of Lowell, a brother, Edward Dean, and Gene Dean, of Lowell, and sister-in-law, Ethel Green, Oz, of Chentsford, and Barbara Green, of Nashua, New Hampshire, several nieces and nephews, and dear friends, Tom and Pat White, Bob and Lois, Colin, and Traversio. In addition to her husband and parents, Dolores was pre-deceased by her sister Nancy Dean, McDougal, and her husband, Jack, as well as her brother-in-law, Arthur Gerald Robert Green, and sister-in-law, Sheila Green Smith. Anybody that knew Dolores and Bill Green knew that they did much for the community over there in Centerville, actually for everybody in Lowell, many days given to driving cancer patients to hospitals. They're a wonderful family and should be sorely missed. I'd like to have the chambers ducked.
Mayor's business, first on the agenda, Lowell celebrates Kerakwak. Motion to accept and place on file by counsel. Very well. Seconded by Mr. Conway. Thank you. And as far as speaker, is there a speaker on behalf? No, sir? Okay. So the next one we have, next order of business, is the Lowell sister city with Calamata, Greece. Motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think there are some speakers here that would, would you like to speak?
Are we just gonna, yep, take it out? Okay. Recognize Mr. Bill Kafka.
Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bill Kafka. I'm the president of the Federation of Hispanic American Societies of New England. We have about 50 societies, Greek societies, of, from different backgrounds of Greece, several of them, they're from Lowell, Massachusetts. I work with many of you at the council on different projects, and I have seen you many times at the parade here in Lowell and the parade, the Greek parade in Boston. The city of Calamata is in the southern part of Greece, close to Sparta and close to Olympia, the birthplace of the Olympic Games. It's about the size of Lowell, they have also university, and they have a big port. I met the mayor of Calamata last July in Calamata, and there is something that is going on for the last year to have sister cities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There are several other cities that express the interest. However, my home in America was Lowell, I'm a Lowell High School graduate, and you must, you Lowell back then graduate, and I think Lowell is the first to be asked if they want to be sister cities with the city of Calamata. Calamata is known for many products that you can find at the local grocery shops, olive oil, olives, and many other things. We would like to have a delegation going to Calamata and some of them to come here to Lowell, to this historic city. Also, we want the education to be involved, the city schools and the university, and also the same thing from Calamata. Also, we would like to improve tourism between the two cities and perhaps the economy. We have a meeting coming up on the 21st of October here at the city hall, and I would like, if you want to join us, it's at 6 o'clock. And then from there on, we're gonna plan to put a project together, and hopefully this is gonna happen within the next few months, to have sister cities with Lowell and Calamata. I want to thank you for all your support, and we're looking forward to have the two cities put together a project to become sister cities. Thank you.
I'd like to take 9.7 out of order. Yep, motion. Mr. Kennedy, second. Mr. Elliott. City and school department worked together to allow the Lowell Fire Department to introduce opioid safety instruction to the Lowell public schools, and our guest speaker is Chief Jeffrey Winward. Do you second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Mayor Samaras likes to tout the city of Lowell as a city of education, and firefighter Late is our public education officer at the fire department. And he goes out into the community and teaches our young children, our elderly, and some of our business owners about fire safety on a daily basis. And because of the opiate scourge that has affected our city and our Commonwealth and our country, we feel that education is another tool in the toolbox for us to combat this terrible opiate epidemic. So we've had some preliminary discussions with the school department on bringing Anthony into the schools in the city to teach our young children about the scourge of opiate addiction. Anthony's developed a training curriculum, and we've discussed with Superintendent Boyd, with head of school, Bastide, over at the high school, with Robin Desmond, and with former superintendent, Jeanine Dirk, and the program that Anthony's developed, and they're all on board with it. So tonight, we're asking for your approval to work, further work with the school committee, with the superintendent, and with the head of school, to bring this training program into our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great motion, you know, with regard to the opiate epidemic in our city or in the state, that I strongly believe that early and often, education around the impact of opium, you know, drug to, you know, families and all that is important. I think that, I hope that you can set up this process quick enough so that it go to all the school, so that the kid educated around the impact of drug on the families and on themselves.
Thank you, counsel.
Excellent. And at this time, I would actually, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to speak a little bit about Lowell Fire. So if you'd just give me a few minutes, I'd like to go ahead and do that. This is a great opportunity that I've been able to seize, to just highlight some of the great things and talk about Lowell Fire. First, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to start by saying thank you to the Lowell House who presented this opportunity, Mr. Jody White, who made this opportunity come to life. I would also like to thank Mr. Mayor for all that he does in this great city, and Chief Winward for his support and guidance while I have been in this position of public education officer. Thank you, gentlemen. One of my main motivating, excuse me, one of my main motivations of seeking this opportunity was to truly highlight how much of an integral role that the Lowell Fire Department plays in this community. The Lowell Fire Department is steeped in longstanding tradition and has, within its rank and file, without a doubt, the most talented, motivated, educated, dedicated, and determined firefighters that are committed to doing their job. I would easily say the best in our state, if not across our great country. From our offices that lead from the front to the newly appointed firefighters that are just getting on the job. The Lowell Fire Department is the bridge that connects city to community. They complete this daunting task by whatever means necessary to ensure a life safety and the protection of property, and quite simply, they make Lowell a safer community. They do this by having internal departments that are organic to Lowell Fire. They ensure regulations of code are enforced with fire prevention, all fires are inspected through fire investigation, and the tireless efforts of our line companies that are quick to respond to medical calls, including their unbelievably hard work in the opioid epidemic, elevator rescues, boat rescues, hazardous material incidences, and fire operations. And that is only mentioning just a few amongst the many tasks that our dedicated firefighters respond to. Keeping in mind that these firefighters are being exposed to hazards that statistics show are causing cancer and that they have a higher risk of heart attack and stroke. The city has made some improvements with new apparatus such as Engine 2, Ladder 2, the rescue, and extractors that help better clean personal protective equipment. I hope we can continue the trend and better equip our firefighters and help mitigate the hazards that they are exposed to, and also provide a safer working and living environment so they can continue to perform in the explanatory manner that they have been accustomed to. I am privileged to work with these men and women who rise to the occasion every time, and last but not least, public education. We have a multitude of programs that advocate fire safety through education. We have tapped into resources that have unified different departments throughout the city that are fighting the same battle, but now we're doing it with the same sheet of music. With Lowell Fire's COOP program, which stands for Community Opioid Prevention and Education, we have collaborated with the co-op team and the health department to further combat this crisis through education. The Public Education Office has also collaborated with fire prevention to provide free office safety to all businesses within our community. We also have a very successful senior program that I am very proud to say, our Go Bag program, which stands for Get Out Bag, has truly been a success. I was asked to speak at last year's Student Awareness of Fire Education Conference. I was able to present this Go Bag, which has been so successful for our city and is now being implemented in different departments around the state as we speak. This is in addition to visiting independent and assisted living facilities to better educate our seniors to stay safe. We also are the host city for the Safe Trailer, which we educate preschool through college on how to recognize and mitigate potential hazards by taking more of a proactive approach and pre-planning for success. We have maintained longstanding relationships with the Lowell Police Department, Trinity, and are continuing to reach out and collaborate with any and all whom share our same concerns. Lowell Fire is continuously front and center on ensuring that our community works together and is constantly evolving to better educate and facilitate the needs of this community. On top of all of this that I've discussed tonight, Lowell Fire is also heavily involved in community events that raise awareness and are involved in charitable organizations like the Jimmy Fund, in which the Lowell Fire hockey team raised over $5,000 last year, in addition to money raised with our boot drives and codes collected from our annual COOP drive and much, much more. So this is just a small insight of what Lowell Fire does on a day-to-day basis. We are within the community, we work for the community, but we are also the community. We have many individuals that have walked the halls of these schools, of Lowell High School. They have lived in the homes either now, have been before, and they do nothing but support everyone that lives in Lowell and to make this community a better place. And I just wanted to take the time to reflect on that and to pay homage to the Lowell Fire Department and what they do for this community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, again, that was a very terrific report, and you spoke very passionately about it, so thank you very much for your service. I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if it makes sense to, while we're out of order or under suspension, to take up your motion regarding 9.8, since we still have the distinguished speakers?
I was gonna ask.
And then 6.1, if we could, too. I know Counselor Mercia is not here, but I see Debbie Belanger in the audience and unable to talk about the 60-day order on La Plume. So if we could take those two things up out of order?
I'll second it.
Second, I have to second, yes. But first, I just want to thank Anthony. I think everybody can understand, to us citizens who are watching this program tonight, you can understand why this Lowell City Council is so proud of our first responders. Anthony is just an excellent example, and a lot of us learned a lot today with what he is talking about and his concerns, and they're genuine, and he's doing a terrific job. I'd just like to have one picture with the counsel, if we could have that. Yeah.
So I'm going to depart, and I just wanted to thank everybody for this opportunity. Please forgive some of my ignorance and some of the ongoings of these proceedings. Hopefully, I wasn't too much of an interruption. And again, thank you for all your support and have a great night.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to commend Anthony. I thought he did an excellent job. I thought you were gonna let him go until the end of the meeting, but evidently, you're not.
No.
But great job.
No, I'm trying to protect my job.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll see me back next year.
Because you wouldn't want to fall in.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I too would like to thank Anthony for all the great work that he does every day in the, not only tonight, but every day in the community with educating our youth and our elderly about fire safety. Great job, Anthony.
Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I too wanted to commend Anthony, he's an outstanding member of the Lowell Fire Department, and what I discovered today, he is also a U.S. Marine and has served this country and has served this country since 1997. So thank you for your service to the country.
Still active. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. We're gonna go back to motion 9.8. So I just, 9.8 is given by myself. Quest city of Lowell begin the formal process to establish a sister-city relationship with Calamata, Greece. I need a second.
Second.
Counselor Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, I think this is an excellent motion, and I also would like to thank Mr. Kafka for coming here this evening to introduce us to the sister city in Greece.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, just very briefly, again, I think this is a great motion, too, because when you take a look at combining the sister cities between us and Greece, I think it's absolutely incredible. When you look back, you see, obviously, you know, as well as anyone, the rich history that the, that the Greek community has had, has actually brought it here to Lowell. So I think there's, it's a natural partnership. So again, I commend you for that.
Thank you. And I think many councils here have also issued, had, set up sister cities with other cities and countries in the world, and I think what we're gonna try to do is refurbish all of this so we can, you know, we're proud of our heritage, all of us, and so I think this will lead to other things. Thank you. Next, we have the, we took out of order, was it 9.?
6.1.
6.1?
Yes.
6.1?
Is it?
60-day trial.
9.4?
6.1. Order of 60-day trial. We have the full reading, second reading by title. "Suing to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, Concerning Section 266-6, the ever-entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days." Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Conway? Do we have a speaker on this?
Hi, I registered this morning. I am Debbie Belanger, and I live at 65 La Plume Avenue in Lowell, Mass. I want to thank Natasha, I want to thank Mayor Mercia, I'm sorry, I've been in the car for nine hours today, driving home from Niagara Falls, so I'm a little bit tired. So thank you for calling us out of motion. I want to thank City Councilor Mercia and the rest of the council for bringing this motion forward. I am standing here to say I'm really happy to see what the results are of this 60-day trial. I'm not gonna say much more because I want Cindy to do most of the talking.
Hi, Cynthia Ducheno, 57, La Plume Ave, Lowell, Mass. We are anxious to see how this 60 days goes. We do appreciate your taking our safety concerns seriously, and in talking to Counselor Elliott and Leahy, we're hoping we can get the buses to do some idling up at the ball field instead of in our front yards going forward, and hopefully, the 60 days will be the beginning of safer times for La Plume Ave. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Cindy brought up a very good point. Right now, the buses idle, waiting for the schoolchildren to be picked up on La Plume Ave, and it just seems like it makes a lot of sense if they can go line up on the road where that leads to the soccer and the two Little League fields. You know, they're just, they're just waiting in line, waiting to be queued up to go in, so it seems like that might relieve some of the congestion, too, but I think it's, I think it's worthy of Natasha can look into that. There's no traffic on that road, so the buses can wait, and when school gets out, they can just pull up instead of on La Plume Ave, which that road is heavily congested to begin with, and school just makes it more.
We don't have sidewalks.
No sidewalks, so, Madam Manager, if there's something that we can look into, I think it would.
We can contact Mr. Dakota at the school department and we'll reach out.
It's something to think about, especially in the winter, it gets.
Gets narrow.
I understand it's a horseshoe that makes it convenient, but they can go down. It's where all the ballparks, it leads to the old health center.
There's a propolis, and then there's, what is it, the Ray Boynton Ballpark now? It used to be the Health Camp.
Used to be the Health Camp.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll reach out to the school department.
Just another option for them to not be.
But I really do want to say thank you to the mayor and the city council and the city manager's office. We had a representative from the city manager's office come to our neighborhood. Natasha, she spent a lot of time there. She came during the time where the buses were flying down the street and everything else, so she got, she did see everything up close and personal. So again, humans work to everybody, so thank you.
Council Leahy?
Just quickly, through you to the manager, when they, if they can reroute the buses, that would be good, you know, to idle, they'd be on the same side of the street. But what might help, too, with traffic and pickup and everything, is a lot of the signage around the school has just faded out, and they weren't, the signs haven't been properly replaced for years. They went up there a couple of times and put a couple of new signs up, but must be about six or seven signs that really need to be replaced with proper signage, when to park, where to park, and all that. So if we could look at that. Thank you.
We'll look at that. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Local call?
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo? Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia? Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Seven years.
Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the city council meeting of September 24th.
Full to approve.
For acceptance, I need a motion of acceptance placed in file by Council Noon, second by Council Milonazo. Then we have unfinished business presented by Council Cirillo. Do we want to put this off for the next meeting?
I had a conversation with Council Cirillo. I don't know if she's talked to the city manager, but I would just move this motion. I think this is a really good motion, and it's been sitting under unfinished business now for about a month or maybe longer, so I think it's a good idea to move the motion forward.
That'll be a second, Council?
By Council Elliot? So the motion is, request city manager have proper department provide city council with a report as to how we are protecting the city government's computer system from becoming infected with aggressive ransomware which encrypts hard drive data to prevent access. Council Kennedy?
Yeah, I just think this is, I think this is a pretty timely motion. I know that there have been other communities, Baltimore, Maryland comes to mind, where they've been held up for ransom, and their whole system has, and I think that in the example of Baltimore, they didn't end up paying the ransom, but the cost to rectify the situation cost them way more than what the ransom would have been. So anyways, I think that it's prudent for us to be sure that we have the proper safeguards in place so that we don't fall victim to something like this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Next, we go to communications from the city manager. The first motion response is ranked choice vote calculation. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city solicitor and assistant city solicitor, Richard Brown, for the report, very detailed report. I understand that consent decree entered with the plaintiff, you know, stressed that we use a system similar to the Cambridge one, and also Minneapolis, but both system, Cambridge and Minneapolis, have a slightly different way of counting. So how do we address those concern?
So that's correct. The consent decree references both Cambridge and Minneapolis, both of which use ranked choice voting, and Minneapolis uses it both for certain boards and also for city council. And I think the thing to emphasize is really the consent decree is about using ranked choice voting as one of the options. And as we put in the motion response, there are certain principles of ranked choice voting that are the sort of important principles of ranked choice voting. So voters rank their choices of candidates. The number-one choices are counted first. There's a threshold according to which, you know, how many votes a person needs to get in order to be deemed elected. And then there's also a system of transferring voter choices. So if somebody has more votes than they need to be elected, the surplus would be transferred. And also, another transfer is if all of the surplus votes have been transferred, then you move to elimination of the lowest ranked person. And everything is really the same in, no matter how you do the counting. And so I think for the purposes of the consent decree, kind of that's the system that's being embraced, if that were to be chosen. With respect to the Cambridge way of counting, it's my understanding that Cambridge uses the system it does because it's written into the charter, and it was written in, I think, like 1938, might not be quite right, but, and Cambridge actually has expressed an interest in moving to what in the memo response was called the fractional method. But because it's written into the charter, it's not quite so simple as just doing it through council. They would potentially have to do a home rule petition, and they haven't done that. But there has been some interest in doing that, and I think everybody agrees that the, using the fractional method is the better way of doing it. So essentially, what Cambridge does, if you have a surplus number of ballots, and you work out, you know, how many, or you look at the whole stack of ballots for a particular candidate, how many surplus they have, and then take from the whole set every, say, fourth ballot that leads up to the surplus amount, and then you take the next choice, the second choice, say, from those ballots. Hopefully, that's understandable. And so there's kind of an element of chance, like it might depend on, you know, which ones you stack first, whereas if you use the fractional method, there's no element of randomness. It's just done by percentages and fractions. So that's why people generally prefer that method and why we would recommend using that method. I think the Cambridge software that is used, they actually have to kind of program it slightly differently to do the ballot counting method that they have written into their charter. It would be much easier, actually, to just use the fractional method.
I would suggest that, you know, at some point, we need to really look at the simplest one and clarify it so that that's what we're going to be doing, so make it an informed decision for voter when they go onto the poll to vote for either or, you know, a hybrid, a three or at-large ranked choice, so that they're clear as to, you know, how we're going to calculate it, which method we use to do so, and need to find a simple one, because it's, you know, complicated one, it won't work with a lot of people. So that's just my suggestion on that.
Council Elliot?
This was a good motion.
More importantly, it was, I think it puts into light the complications associated with this type of voting system. I read this memo numerous times, and it just tells me that this is not the voting system that we should be employing in the city. It's very complicated. There's algebra that has to be used, and I was terrible in algebra, so maybe that's why I don't understand the memo. But I can't imagine trying to tabulate and then shifting votes if you meet a certain threshold, and how that plays out when there's, what if there's 30 candidates? And I'm not asking for a response, I'm just saying, when we do have the sessions, the outreach sessions, that this memo be present, because anyone considering voting for ranked choice voting should read this memo, excuse me, and then understand why it's complicated. I always believe that it should be district representation anyway, but I thank you for the response, because I just think it's very complicated and it's not, just not a good system. So, thank you.
Council Leahy, then Council Milonazo.
Thank you. I was wondering, when we explain this, is there any way you can do an example, just do 12 names or whatever, 18 names, and then just kind of show what the original calculations are, and then show how you get to the top nine? That'd be the easiest way, too, when you explain it, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I'm just going to add, and the manager can speak to this, but there will be an upcoming session on Monday, and we certainly can ask that that type of example be laid out. The real purpose of the motion, however, was aimed at addressing issues that had been raised in the public as to whether the city was wedded to the Cambridge system. And the real gist of the motion is, A, we're not, and it wasn't the only system that was mentioned in the settlement documents, and second, that ultimately, the council can finalize whatever system that you feel is the best. The law department recommended what generally is considered to be the current gold standard with these systems. And again, these calculations are done by the voting, by the voting machines. What the voters really begin to understand as part of the system is the effect of their ranking of the candidates, and that's the critical part for the voter. And the manager might want to add on to that.
I imagine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good point, too, again, let the public know, a week, next Monday night at 7:00, there is going to be another session on the settlement and the Voting Rights Act results. That will be at 6:00 at the Senior Center on Broadway from 6:00 to 8:00. This is going to be a little bit different than the last session. It will be a panel discussion. There will be an expert on hand who is going to moderate the panel discussion. There will be somebody from the city of Cambridge to discuss their method of ranked choice voting and how that's implemented there. Also, from the city of Worcester, who has a hybrid system, mixed district representation and at-large. And then I believe there'll be an advocate for each one of those. So it's a four-way panel discussion, and also an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions. And so we hope it's informative, just a different format of how we're trying to put information out. I think it's a good point, too, we will have on hand all of our information, website references and so forth, in terms of, for the public. And this is also going to be televised on LTC. So we will look forward to that session, and we're working on further outreaches.
Council Noon?
Just one other thing. So most of us are going to be in Protectaville. So will there be time to do a mock election and kind of show people the effects of their vote?
We'll get back to you on that, Council. We'll figure out, we don't have the computer software right now, but let me see if we can figure out how we could do a mock election on that, so.
All right, thank you.
Council Noon, then Council Milonazo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that a lot of work put into this, three pages, complicated, very complicated, but thank you for the hard work you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you for the response. And Assistant City Solicitor Brown did mention the word "software" a couple of times. We, as I understand it, if we end up going with the ranked choice voting, we're going to have to invest in new software. My question is, if we end up going with the 8.3, will the current machines and the current software work for the 8.3? And I guess as a follow-up, I don't know if you've gotten estimates yet as to the cost of the software and the new equipment for the ranked choice voting? Because again, after November 5th, this, you know, we're going to have to, obviously, as a council, make a decision.
The, as far as the voting machines, for a hybrid system, there would be costs in terms of hiring an expert to work with the city, and that would occur every 10 years as well with the new census information coming out. The machines that we have right now, there has been a recommendation to upgrade our machines regardless of whichever system we go to. Obviously, with the ranked choice voting, there's no, there's really no option. However, our machines are likely reaching the end of their, even though they're still functioning, and we have on hand for every election, two individuals from the company that oversees the machines, so that if there's ever any kind of malfunction, which does happen in every community from time to time, we have two technicians available on each side of the city to quickly address it.
And I'll just add with respect to the software. I think the person who will be coming from voter choice MA next week can probably answer that better than me. But I know that the software is available open source, so it, we will try to get the some cost estimates.
Okay, thank you.
Council Conway? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, through you to the city manager, this event is going to be at the Senior Center Monday night, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And as Council Elliot mentioned, the ranked choice voting, and I think a lot of people realize that it's extremely difficult. I know myself, I wouldn't want to have to take a test on it right now. And I, I think it's imperative that we get this word out to the public. What other means besides, I mean, LTC, people that are listening to the television tonight know that it's going to take place? What time was that going to be, by the way? Is it?
6:00. And it will be replayed on LTC. We are asking them to give us the schedule of all of the filming that has happened, both here in the council chamber, the prior session, and replaying this session as well.
So it would be also on our website, too? Is that correct?
Yeah, we will have information on the website, and people can go to the website, yourlolyourvote.org to obtain information, including the scheduling of these, you know, the, not just the live recording of the event, but also when it will be rebroadcast.
And have we reached out, like, for example, to Lowell Sun? I think this would be very informative to the public. If at all possible, they could have some type of notice in the Lowell Sun, letting people know this.
Yeah, we will, we will follow up with that. And we've also sent it out to community organizations across the city to post, and as well as the media, so we will, we will follow up with that again.
All the neighborhood groups?
Correct. Yep.
All right, thank you. Council?
Mr., if I may, I just want to add one point of thanks. The preliminary election that took place was overseen by Attorney Elliot Veloso from the Law Department, who has been acting as the interim director. I just want to give him credit. He did an excellent job, and he has stepped up to the plate and served the city very well. I received a compliment today, in fact, over, from one of the election commissioners over how well he handled it, as well as the training session for all of the poll workers and so forth. So I just want to thank him.
Thank you, Council Elliot?
Just a quick question. Madam Manager, how much does it cost to run a local election now? I guess I don't expect you to have that number off the top of your head, but it.
I don't have the exact number, but we can get it for you next week. We'll have a better idea after the preliminary that we just ran, as well as then the general. But we can, we can get you that figure. I don't want, I have a ballpark, but I'd rather get the exact figure from Attorney Veloso.
I've been asked a number of times, just because of the.
Right.
You know, the turnout and essentially eliminating one candidate. It'd be, it'd be good to know exactly how much that costs. And I'm not suggesting that we don't, I just think that we don't have the preliminary, but it's food for thought moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the motion?
Mr. Mayor? If I could, you know, we're reaching out to the neighborhood groups regarding this voting thing, but the.
voting thing, but the Latino community, the best way to get them is through the congregation, the pastors. So, if we could also include the pastors and, you know, maybe they could say something. If we're going to do this on Monday, they may be able to announce it on Sunday. And I would think that that would be a group that would be interested in knowing about this.
Look into that as well.
Thanks.
Counsel.
Thank you.
Next on the motion response, dumping of closing bins, Counsel Elliot.
Thank you for the response. It's a good response. I did notice in some of the locations, at least one that was used as a, as a dump, there was a camera on it. So, I appreciate the fact that these, you know, these bins, they, A, they keep textiles out of the waste stream, but also they're a source of revenue for these nonprofit organizations. And, you know, and I did, I was contacted by, by at least one individual that said, they pay, when they go to pick up and there's, and there's trash and dump, they have to pay for, you know, they pick it up and they dispose of it. So, it's, I think the fact that they're putting cameras on these bins is helpful. So, thank you for the response, and hopefully it'll, hopefully it'll stop. Thank you.
Next, we have online permitting. Counsel Elliot.
Again, good news. I appreciate that the administration is moving forward on online permitting. I know other communities have done it, but I like the fact that there will be a pilot program, especially in light of, you know, motion that was put forward by Counsel, Counsel Surlow on ransomware and, you know, malware. So, I think it's, I think it's wise that we're moving cautiously, and a pilot program will be rolled out in FY20, and if it's successful, then we'll see a rollout in '21. So, I, I think this is, this is good news. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. And I think MIS and Mr. Fernandez has been very cautious about these programs for that very reason, wanting to make certain that all protective steps are taken so that there isn't any inadvertent access to our system or network. So, it's very carefully looked at.
Thank you. Next, we have summer repairs and maintenance of HVAC schools. Two motions in by Counsel Lehe, Counsel Conway. Counsel Lehe?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Through you to the manager. I did speak to you about different reports today, so I thank you for the report. And I just, we're moving forward on trying to organize to get a better system. And so, thank you for their efforts this summer, and we'll just try to keep increasing the communication better and get a better system going. Thank you.
Counsel Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. It's, it's great to see that when we've checked out the heating system at, in all the schools, it seems like it's, they're all functioning at this point. And again, this is, this is something that I believe everyone here has put on one, one way or another, and I'm sure that councilors prior to us, is some form of a preventative maintenance program, and I think this is certainly part of it. Also, the, the fact of having a contractor dealing with Lowell High School, and I think that's extremely important because it's a very complicated, it's almost a city within a city. When you were talking about almost 4,000 individuals, teachers, staff, students, with, I think, close to, I think it's about 800, 800,000, almost a million square feet, which is, you know, with, with the entire high school itself. So, it is a complicated situation, and I think that it's a good idea to farm that out. Because we've had, you know, we've sat in these chairs year after year after year talking about the problem, the heating system at Lowell High School. So, I think this, you know, I applaud for that, that type of move. If you could, just for a moment, speak on the MSBA accelerated repair program, because it's amazing, and I, and I think that we need to applaud you and your team bringing this forward because of the incredible amounts of money that this is going to actually save the city and the school department over, over the next few years. And, and also, I applaud you that you and your staff, that you'll be also adding, hopefully adding more projects in the next year or two. Could you speak on that, please, so the public could knows what's going on with that, please?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, just briefly on the high school. Obviously, we are trying to make certain that the systems are operational for the next years while we are going forward with the new project. And so, we have contracted with private services to do a number of things over at the high school, including replacing condensation, condensate, tanks in the 1922 building, valves and thermostats in 100 or more classrooms, I believe, over there, and other ongoing work in, in the high school. So, we are working, it is a day-to-day work in progress. We have brought in experts from the outside to, to assist us in that effort. With regard to the accelerated repair program for the MSBA, we did, with the council's support, last January, apply for a number of projects under the terms of the MSBA. This project, this program provides assistance for communities for replacement of boilers, roofs, doors, and windows in some cases. We applied for a number of those that we were eligible for at the time of applying. Again, with the council's support, the EMG report that we commissioned last summer, that came in in December, told us that there were a number of projects that we haven't been in, in the Q4 and that we should apply for. So, we did apply. The deadline is in, someday in January. We did make that deadline. Initially, we applied for nine programs, because at the initial application, the criteria, we would have technically been eligible to apply. Because of the overwhelming response from across the Commonwealth, the MSBA was forced to change criteria for, for roofs in particular. And I believe it was roofs, Alex McGee from my office who handled that. They, they raised the age limit. It had been 20 years, they raised it to 27. And I think two of our projects were 25 or 26 years old, so we just missed the cutoff. But every other project that we applied for was approved by the MSBA, and that includes roofs as well as boilers in, in six different schools. Some schools are getting both roof and boiler. So, under the program, we are entitled to 80% reimbursement, which is a huge benefit for the city. And the approximate value is, is, from the MSBA, is about $8.3 million. So, clearly, it's an enormous benefit for us in terms of replacing these systems in our schools right now. We're in the process where the MSBA, under accelerated repair, they assign a project engineer, a project manager, and a design, and the intent is we will be pushing full speed ahead on these schools for roofs and boilers, with the intent to start construction next spring and be ready for the next academic year. So, that said, the next round is January of this year. We've already identified a number of schools that we will be applying for again, and new ones that we are determining in terms of eligibility. We'll wait for the MSBA to tell us exactly what the eligibility requirements will be for 2020 in January, but we intend to be as aggressive with this round as we were last year, because it really makes a difference. It helps, it helps us address the needs of the schools. It frees up capital that can be used in other much-needed areas, whether it's schools or city buildings, so.
How many, how many schools are you targeting for this, this second round?
Well, I think we're waiting to find out exactly what the criteria. Alex is telling me, seven schools for the, we believe, will be eligible for the next round.
So, would this be something close to that eight, 8.3 million dollars?
Likely, likely so. Because the, this, this was six schools, but some had both roof and boiler included. And likewise, will happen in the next round as well.
Well, I'm glad to see, you know, this kind of money that's invested. We've put aside, basically, put aside this money to invest in our buildings. So, again, thank heavens that we do have this opportunity, that, you know, looking at it just roughly, it could be over a period of two years, about $15 million going into our schools and to, to help with the repayers.
Right. And, and I do want to acknowledge the MSBA, Treasurer Goldberg, Senator Kennedy, and the, the whole team, Jack McCarthy, you know, they have been supportive of this program. They've been very supportive of the City of Lowell. We're very grateful for that.
Well, we like that team.
We do like that team.
Thank you.
Counsel Malazo.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Thank you, Counsel Lehe and Conway, for putting the motions forward. I think it's very exciting, the work that's being done. I just have a question. I hope my colleagues will indulge me, because it's not related to the report, but it has to do with the schools. I heard this past week that a number of our schools, their printers are down, as a result of either service contracts not being updated and/or not having print supplies in the building. And they're being told it's going to be a while for this to get rectified, so I guess teachers are going out and spending their own money. So, I, I just don't know why that would happen. So, again, I appreciate my colleague indulging me with the question, because it's an issue. It's an issue. If you have 26 schools and you've got an issue with the service contract on printers, it's a problem.
I, I think, and the solicitor perhaps can address this, the school department did contract for new printers in a number of the schools, but the contract has not been finalized, so that I think the printers aren't online yet in the, so the Law Department is assisting to try and finalize those contracts with the vendor so that they may be operated. So, I, I think what happened was, and again, you know, the, the, there was a contract negotiated, I believe printers were delivered but weren't put in use because the contract had not been finalized. So, Madam Solicitor, if you have any more to add?
This is a contract that's off the state vendor list.
Okay.
And during the course of our review, we have been in frequent contact with the state on these contracts, and that information has been passed to the school department throughout the course of this process. The, if you're going to use a vendor off the state contract list, then you have to use the state contract, and you have to comply with all the requirements of that contract. We just received more information today. It's, it's been reviewed, and the problem still has not been fully resolved, unfortunately, with the, with the company, with the Law Department.
You know, there's some frustration in, in some of the school buildings.
Understood.
Right.
The, what the Law Department had recommended is to also be negotiating with a backup in the event that this contract that they've been pursuing is not, does not come to fruition. And as of right now, the, the contract that we, that we have is one that we would not be able to legally execute. And that has just been or is being communicated.
But this, this company's on the state list, is that what you said, or the federal list?
State list.
State list.
It's on a state list. And so, when you have a, when you're going off the state list, one of the requirements, for example, is that you have to go with the actual vendor and not the supplier. And so, the new documents that we have are, once again, with the supplier, which we cannot execute. And this point with this particular vendor has been raised now several times, and it has gone back and forth. It has been, I think, a frustrating process for everyone involved, most assuredly the teachers that are the end users of these things. So, we've been working hard to try to resolve it, and unfortunately, it's still lingering.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for the update, and I hope it gets resolved.
We're expecting a report tomorrow in executive session, but I understand, there's no question that it's created a number of issues, especially with our teachers. You will get a report.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Elliot.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, what's, what's the end result? I mean, right in the middle of the school year, and there's no printers? That, I'm sure there's frustration, but that makes no sense, if you're, we're going off the state bid list. Can you just explain what the issue is and, and, you know?
Well, there's been, there's been lots of issues with it, and there has been issues as to who we can contract with. There have been issues as to what the terms and conditions can be. Originally, the, what was being proposed is that machines, for example, that were dropped off would not be collected by the, by the vendor. It would be done at the expense of the city. It's completely, it's prohibited under the state contract. There was also originally no provisions for the maintenance and repair of this equipment, so that it would be dropped off. And then if it didn't work, or there were problems with it, it would be at the expense of the city. These are all things that, if you are going to go off the state vendor list, there are, these are the things that are already negotiated by the state, and we cannot agree to things that, that are contrary to that. And so, these things have been communicated several times to the, to the vendor, as well as their distributor. And unfortunately, we just, they, they will verbally agree, and then when we get the documents, we just got them again today, and to some degree, we are right back to square one again, dealing with some of the very things that we have addressed several times now.
So, is the issue that we already purchased all the equipment, and it's just sitting there, and we don't have no maintenance agreements, they can't take the old equipment away? We're stuck with this vendor?
We're not stuck with the vendor. The vendor went ahead and dropped off equipment with the school department. The school department was advised, don't use it, and let them know that we are not formally accepting delivery of these machines until there is a signed contract.
So, do we not just proceed to someone else on the state bid list?
Well, that's, that's what we have recommended, and it's my understanding that because of the, the series of problems, that for this tomorrow evening's meeting, there are actually two vendors, is my understanding, that are listed on the, on the state list. The, I mean, on the school committee agenda. The vendor that they had had previously, and, and this new vendor that they attempted to enter into a contract with in late August of this year.
Can I just ask one more question? I don't want to belabor the issue. So, who put this out to, I mean, we didn't put out the bid, we just went and solicited off the state bid list. Is that the city, or is it someone, it's the IT department?
The school department. The school department was soliciting and negotiating these contracts.
How long has this been going on?
This has been going on since August.
Okay.
I mean, you, I'm very curious myself. I mean, we need answers, okay?
We need answers. We need printers.
Yeah. No, but you need the printers, but you have to have the answers to get the printers.
Counsel Lehe.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So, through you to the solicitor, why, why, I don't understand why we're renegotiating. Why haven't they just dropped everything and picked up another contractor?
I mean, I, that's, we're not in the...
Well, I mean, you're, you're two months into the school system, and, you know, when I left eight years ago, we have the used books, we copied everything. So, this would be like having three buildings down to me. I mean, this makes no sense at all.
Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, so this went out in late August? Did schools start in late August?
It, nothing really went out, per se. It was, again, I believe, we weren't involved in these negotiations. They were going off the state vendor list, and they were still negotiating with this new company in, sometime in mid-August, yeah.
So, would you have a recommended solution? I mean, what would you, if you were recommending to the school committee, what would you recommend? That they just redo it with another, another vendor altogether?
Right. Our recommendation was that while you're pursuing what may produce savings, cost savings, that you also have a, a backup plan. And that was, that was recommended many, many weeks ago. And it's my understanding that they did, in fact, continue to negotiate a backup plan. And that's why tomorrow evening, there are the, the two contracts under the permission to enter that will be going before this, the school committee. The expectation was that the initial company that they have been negotiating with, that they would have had a finalized deal, and that was obviously our hope as well. We've gone over these documents... and that was obviously our hope as well. We've gone over these documents several times.
There's a number of issues that have been raised and have not been answered, so that's what we're seeking tomorrow night, the committee is.
Okay.
It's as simple as that.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense.
Right. Okay. See what the school committee does.
Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Listening -- through you to the city solicitor, listening to your explanation, it sounds like this has been a bit of a debacle for, I don't know how long, that they promised one thing and then they don't follow through on it. So let me see if I get this straight. The school department is now seeking another alternative, another company. Is that correct?
Yes. They've -- they have been -- somebody at the school department has been negotiating with another company as a protective measure in the event that they are unable to -- that were unable to finalize, legally finalize a deal with the vendor for whom they've been dealing.
Well, I mean, I think the present vendor, needless to say, shows that they're not very reliable, so I think it seems to me it's just logical that a change needs to take place, one way or another, whether it's today, next week, or next month. That goal should be a change. I mean, it's -- maybe I'm wrong, but it just doesn't make sense to be trying to negotiate with a company that's not following through. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we have potential to combine school and city -- I'm sorry, potential reorganization of DPW and Parks Department. Council Leahy?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Then we have the potential to combine school and city HR and finance department. Council Elliot?
Thank you. It's a good report. You know, the attempt to try to consolidate and keep lines of communication open, but I appreciate the report, and I don't know if Connor wants to expand on it anymore. I know there are some logistical challenge with this, so.
Sure. Thank you, Councilor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The report just outlines the recommendations and the process for any kind of consolidation. I think the main point of the response is that it would be incumbent, according to the law, for the school committee to cede the control, and then there would have to be an MOU worked out. It discusses some smaller communities and smaller towns where this has happened, and to various levels of success. I think it's important to note the existing level of cooperation between the city and school finance functions. We meet regularly every month with my counterpart on the school side. However, it does seem like something that both bodies would need to agree to, which may seem to have a number of challenges.
Right. No, I think that's the point. And as you mentioned, some smaller communities that have smaller shafts. This was just as a result of the confusion and all the problems that surfaced as a result of lack of communication with payroll and people getting paid and hiring and, you know, temporaries, long-term. So as long as, I think, as you mentioned, this communication, then I think that makes sense, and we'll keep fingers crossed. I mean, Council Millenazza just brought up a point with IT, and there hasn't been communication. So it's a good report. Thank you. It's worth a shot. I mean, it was worth a shot, but I do understand the logistical concerns of getting, you know, both governing bodies to agree to it, and that's probably not practical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great motion and a great response by Connor, as usual. You know, the problem that we spoke of earlier, the contract with vendors and the lack of communication between the school and the cities clearly highlight a need to do more of talking and maybe combining both HR and finance together so that we have really talked to each other more often. That way, problem won't arrive. Like, four or five months ago, same thing. So I think this is something that we need to work toward, to combine it, and to have more dialogue between the school and the city, really. Thank you.
Next, we have river gauge by Council Cirello. Council Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I guess this motion was Council Cirello's, but I've got a motion in to do basically the same thing. And I'm well aware, I think everybody on this council is well aware, that the gauge that Anell uses and the agreement that we have with Anell is for a gauge that's further down the river, down near the Hunts Falls Bridge someplace. The idea of having a gauge there would be because there are certain times of the year when many people, many residents in Pawtucketville have a keen interest in knowing just what the level of the river is. And so that was the point of the gauge. It is not -- I'm not even sure that Anell needs to be involved in a gauge like that. There just needs to be something so that people who live in Pawtucketville without having to drive down to the Hunts Falls Bridge can know what the level of the river is. So I think, Madam Manager, that your recommendation is that we not move forward because of the cost and because Anell would not be interested in participating. But my question is, how can we get to a place where we do have a gauge for residents who would like that information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. So the recommendation from the city engineer who is here was based on the agreement that was reached with Anell because the agreement specifies the data points, one of them being the Hunts Fall Bridge as one. And in the new gauge that's being suggested at Clay Pit Brook would not be a data point. Based on some of the communication that we had, it was our understanding that there was a desire for that other -- the gauge further upriver at Clay Pit Brook to be considered in role, you know, the relief from the dam. But having said that, so the recommendation's based on the current state of the agreement, and I know the engineer has had recent conversation with FERC because they are party to this in terms of regulation, and she can speak to this. But my understanding is, you know, based on our conversation, what could be done, especially if there was a desire to replace the data point from Hunts Fall Bridge to a newer gauge, what's the process? And so Christine Clancy could address this. But one was to see if FERC -- see if Anell is in agreement, and then there's a process with FERC, applying through FERC. So, you know, we're more than happy to continue to work on this and talk to the neighbors, but I think, based on what we understood, the neighbors did want that new gauge to measure and be determinative of actions to be taken by Anell. Christine, I don't know if you -- if I reported that correctly?
I would say that's accurate. I thought the intent of this request for the gauge was so that it could establish potentially an amendment to the current dam control protocols that exist with Anell. So in the response that we have, I think that was what we thought the intent was. If we were to coordinate with Anell, we could make a request to Anell. We have had previous conversations with Anell and talked about this. We have not had a response to date or a recent response. Just recently, we did have a communication with FERC just to understand this process as well, and if it was something that Anell did want to pursue or was willing to consider the opportunity, we could talk to FERC. And there is, as the city manager said, there are processes likely having to be reviewed by their compliance division to understand the existing protocol and if there's any deficiencies with the existing protocol, which is the Hunts Fall gauge.
Thank you. I think that, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the members of the city council and many members of the neighborhood, the Pawtucketville neighborhood, probably are aware that the FERC agreement is tied into Hunts Falls. I don't really understand why it makes sense to do that other than that was already existing, but that's part of the agreement. So that would be something that would be -- to have it be that the gauge in up at Clay Brook was the determining gauge would be something that would take a long, long time. But to have a gauge so that residents can at least know where the river is and how far they are from the flood area, I think is something that's important to them. And so -- and I'm not sure that if that's all we're looking for, whether the cost would be $45,000. But I would appreciate it, and I'm certain that many of the residents of Pawtucketville would appreciate it if you could take a second look at this and see whether or not we can do this cheaper and without having it be that it's the determining gauge.
We will certainly take a look at it. You know, some of the communication we have was asking us to revise the agreement and protocol, so we'll continue to look at it. We just want to make certain, you know, that we're all clear on process. And there is a process to follow, but we will look at it again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good response, and I agree. Can we look for a less expensive? But I would think that, you know, this data point that's being used downstream, that was prior to the installation of a bladder dam. So, you know, maybe can we look at relocating it if -- I mean, there is a gauge, per se. There are elevation measurements at the dam itself that were once used in calculating the elevation. It just seems, knowing this bladder dam and, you know, the extreme events, weather events that we've had, it would make sense for them to establish another data point. Maybe it can be a pilot program. I know many federal regulatory agencies, they do -- they're establishing data points for so many other reasons, environmental and so on. So, you know, maybe FERC can do on a temporary basis to collect data for two or three years. I just think it makes sense for even Anell to collect data that's affecting the neighborhood and the people there. So points have already been making -- been made. We've been working on this for many, many years. I'm sure we'll continue to work on them, but thank you, Madam Manager.
Council Leahy? Thank you. Through you to the engineer. So do they use that gauge downriver for what?
I mean, that was -- that's a USGS gauge that was established, I believe, I don't know the exact date, but I believe the 1930s, and that is being maintained by USGS now. So that's a gauge that monitors the height of the river and also the flow, and they maintain it on a monthly basis. They make sure it's calibrated. So that is information that is updated to National Weather Service, NOAA. It's real-time data that is reported to the community, or anyone can access it online.
So it has nothing to do with the dam, then?
The dam uses that information, but it's not necessarily there just for the dam. It's -- there's different data points along the river. There's an upstream gauge. I think the next upstream one is in -- that's active is in Manchester. So there's different gauges along the river. We have one on the Concord River. So they're used -- they have different services or they're on the website. Information's uploaded to websites, but this particular, the Pawtucket Falls references elevations are referenced for Hunts Falls.
Because I have a hard time, like, with the rest of my colleagues, understanding why we're measuring the water after the dam. Don't we want to measure it before it hits the dam so the dam goes up or down, right? And then the other thing is, I mean, you just can't simplify it by putting a stick in the -- at the Rook Bridge that tells you, you know, color code it and how high the water is, and then, I mean, we're not going to lower the dam anyways, right?
No, it's owned by Anell.
Right. So why don't we just put a color code stick on the Rook Bridge, and then everybody from that point down knows how high the river is, and then if we can't control the dam anyways, then there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, I think, and, I mean, that is true currently, and that in terms of the agreement that was reached and what is the criteria for lowering the dam. But as I said, I believe some of the neighbors would like that revised, that agreement, and so that's, you know, so that if it was a reading at Clay Pit Brook, then that could trigger a certain reaction in terms of the dam itself. I know the chief is here, he's worked.
And just one other quick, are we happy with the way they're monitoring the dam? Because like last week, it looked like it was already leaking because of big tree limbs going either through it or getting stuck on it. So last week, I noticed that, you know, it wasn't working 100%. It was -- had a big tree limb going through it.
Yeah. Chief Winward works in this area quite a bit.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I actually live in the neighborhood, and I follow the gauge very closely. So it is very accurate, even though it is down on the Hunts Falls area. In 1936, we had the great flood. The gauge read approximately 68 feet, which is well above major flood stage. And in 1938, it was around 68 feet again. In 2006, 2007, it was in the 58-foot range, and it was, again, a major flood. And over the last few years, it's approached 50 feet, and you can actually watch the river, and you can see that that gauge is very accurate when you look at the gauge online as compared to the water level up at the waterfall.
Okay. All right. But and so what about like the tree limbs that went through it last week? Does that?
We have contacted Anell to try to get the tree removed, and we haven't had any luck with that yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Council Millenazza?
Thank you. This may be taking weights outside the box, but why couldn't we get the plans and specifications from the USGS? And we have a very good partnership with the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, and they have a, you know, very distinguished engineering department. They're in the neighborhood. Why couldn't we ask them to, you know, look at the -- and then we would actually monitor it. The fire department would all, you know, could monitor it, or the city engineer could monitor it, and not amend. I know you want to -- we want to amend the contract with Anell, but in the meantime, we're being asked by the residents of the neighborhood to try to get this, you know, where they'd like this new USGS monitoring system to be located, and have it be a public partnership with the university and get it done.
So certainly if we, in terms of an amendment, information in research such as you're referring would be important and essential for the consideration by FERC.
Right.
I think the, again, we'll go back to the neighborhood. I know this has been a very important topic, but I think one of their important points is, I understand, is they want to, if there is a level, they want a response from Anell. And if we're not able to force a response, it might, you know, it would be information, but if they're flooding, they're not going to be happy about that.
Okay.
But we'll continue. Yeah, but the, I think the idea of reaching the university is a good one because that is one thing that FERC has said, you know, we're going to have to show why, you know, why we want this here and not further downriver. And so I think they could be very helpful in that presentation.
Thank you. Next, we motion response, Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and Lactation Room. Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report through you to the city manager. The, as you know, that this is a very new law going back to 2018. So I think there are many people who are not aware of it in the workforce. And at the last sentence on the report, it says the city has accommodations in each building for their employees. Most employees will use their own offices. In the event that they do not have office space or space in the buildings, a designated room is located in City Hall. So I think that certainly takes care of City Hall, but I think with the motion, we were talking about all the city buildings, which in our case, there are a number of schools and young women that work in those schools, especially the elementary and even the middle schools. So do we have accommodations for them? Or how is that -- how does that work?
Let me -- Mary Calery, the head of HR, is here. I'm not cer -- I'm not certain we have control over the school, but Mary, if you can address that. We do know about our buildings, but in terms of the schools, we could find that out from the school department.
I thought that because the school department were actually tenants of the city, that those buildings would be responsible for...
But they're our tenant, but we can't tell them what to put in the building or where they put their classrooms or so forth. But we could certainly follow up communicating this law to their HR now that there is someone at HR over in the school side. that, that there is someone at HR over in the school side, as well as get an update on that. Because there are certainly probably many, uh, people who would, would, would be interested in, in this and benefit from it.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the thrust of the motion. I, I realize this is one building, but from what I have, uh, and I've talked to a few people in regards to this, and, and basically what they said was, uh, the head of the, of the building, being a school, uh, would be the individual that would be in charge of, um, of, um, coming up and, and designating a specific area. Did, did we reach out to the school department at all? And ask them?
Yes, I, I sent back, uh, last year, I sent them a copy of the act that we put together. But I can check on that for you and get your report.
Yeah, and do we know if they?
Sure.
All right, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Ms. Conway?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we have, uh, pop-up shops, that was a motion I made. Uh, Madam Manager, could you just give a quick description of what a pop-up shop is, what we're trying to do?
Sure. Uh, Andrew Shapiro, our Director of Economic Development is here, um, and with your permission, I'll ask him to address that. He's been working on this, um, subject, um, in looking at other cities, for instance, the city of Chicago, uh, and ordinances, and is working on that. So, Andrew, if you could, um, explain where you're at on this?
Sure, yeah, thank you, um, and thank you to the, Mr. Mayor for your support on this. Um, we have been, uh, having some semi-regular meetings between, um, the Division of Development Services, my office, um, some outside stakeholders, uh, from the, um, brokerage community, as well as E-for-all, which is very actively engaged, as folks know, uh, in, you know, the entrepreneurship and business development, uh, side of things. And we just wanted to basically brainstorm ways to creatively and actively use vacant storefronts, or even vacant, um, commercial office space, uh, in the city, that could, um, be creatively used to activate those spaces, um, while at the same time, creating opportunities for new business owners, and giving them an opportunity and a forum to, uh, try out their, uh, try out their business ideas. And, uh, the city of Chicago, um, I believe, last year was the first city in the nation to, um, create a pop-up ordinance to basically facilitate, uh, better, or more easily facilitate these types of, uh, business transactions. And what they did was, um, they provide essentially a pop-up license, uh, for businesses to utilize if they want to go into, um, those types of locations for, uh, say, a period of a year or less. Um, and business, or excuse me, property owners themselves, uh, they would not be required to really do anything other than being willing to, um, have their space used for that purpose, um, and negotiate something with, um, the individual tenants or the individual business owners to use their space. Um, so it's an interesting concept, uh, we want to, we want to explore it further. Currently, um, the senior planner, Christine McCall, in the, uh, Division of Development Services, is, uh, drafting an ordinance, and once that's ready for, um, review, we'll, we'll look at it, uh, internally to make sure it kind of, um, you know, accomplishes what we think it should, um, and maybe get some outside perspective on it as well. And then once, um, we've vetted that a little further, we'll obviously, uh, bring it forward to the city council for its consideration.
And, I mean, have you had any considerations from the outside? I mean, as to, they take advantage of the situation?
Yeah, I think, you know, in general, we've had very positive feedback from folks on the outside on wanting to see more pop-up activity, um, you know, E-for-all, uh, given all the, um, business, um, participants they have come through their accelerator program on a yearly, or a bi-yearly basis, um, I, I know that a lot of the folks that, uh, contribute to that, or participate in that program would want to participate, um, you know, being a pop-up. So, I think there's definitely broad support for it. I think we just need to get, um, uh, further buy-in from the, um, community of property owners, so they understand this more, and they know that this is an option for them, um, and that it won't preclude them from entering into, let's say, long-term leases with other tenants in the future.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much for that information. Yes, Counsel Lee? Can I just add one thing that's, um, sort of related to this while we have DPD, DPD here? Um, through you, the manager, over on Maple Street, they, uh, somebody did a great job over there, they cleaned up that whole side where the condos are on Maple Street, there's like, um, industrial garages. So, I think it was through DPD and, and the neighborhood groups, but, uh, it looks fantastic over there, it's about time. The whole street's cleaned up, they're getting them to clean up the, uh, broken doors and windows, um, so huge improvement over there, I just want to say thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we have proposed rule change by Counsel Conway. And, and, Counsel Mercia? Any questions, Counsel Conway?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the, uh, report. Um, I appreciate it. Could you, uh, this has been, uh, an issue, uh, in the last, uh, I think the last few months, and we had, uh, a group of people come in here and disrupt the, uh, the subcommittee, and I think it was Counsel Cirillo's subcommittee that they actually had, uh, had to stop. So, I think it might be a wise thing that, you know, here we have, uh, this report, and perhaps let the public know exactly what can we do and, and can't do when they come in here into the, uh, into the chambers, to the, to the city solicitor.
These, um, uh, these changes that are being proposed would address things such as, um, signage, to make sure that if there were signs, they wouldn't interfere, uh, with the rights of others attending the meeting. It would call for a, a decorum that when, um, whether it be a councilor or a member of the public is speaking, that they not be interrupted or drowned out, uh, with, uh, with noise. Uh, it would also protect this, uh, sort of inner area where the counselor, council sits, and not permit, um, access by members of the public unless authorized by the chair of the, um, subcommittee or the, or the mayor. Uh, it would also regulate things like cellphone usage and, um, and other items.
Has, would this mirror, uh, other communities that similar situation? Because I think when, when we had that subcommittee, we were, we talked about, you know, basically not reinventing the wheel, that I'm sure that all these things have been tested by law, uh, through the courts, what we can do and what we can't do.
Correct. Other, other communities have taken, uh, similar steps to, um, to address these types of, um, decorum issues.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
Motion to send us to the rules subcommittee.
Second by?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up question, um, and it might be in the rules, and I apologize for not having the rulebook handy, but, um, I mean, since I'm not running for reelection, I can say this, but some of, uh, the challenges who are running for election have actually come to the council chambers with, um, shirts and with buttons. And, and again, I respect the fact that they're obviously running, but I thought politicking was not allowed in the chamber. And I don't know whose, the job would be, I don't know if it would be the mayor's job, or whose job would be to say to someone who might be coming in to speak on an, an issue, and if they're wearing a full shirt, standing at the microphone, um, and again, legitimately talking on an issue. But I just thought, I just thought that that's something that this council and the mayor and the, and the, and the, and the solicitor really frowned on. But again, the rules, again, have to address it, if it's in the rules book.
If, if I may, the, um, um, these changes were designed really to narrowly tailored for, um, more of your garden variety decorum issues. Uh, the issue that you have raised is certainly a substantive one and an important one. Uh, there have been, uh, times, for example, where, um, I can think of one particular instance, where there was, um, a, um, signage, political signage, in the mayor's reception room, and in fact, members of the law department, um, approached the organizer and informed them that, um, that needed to be shut down, that event needed to be shut down. Um, the, where those, um, regulations arise from, though, are more in terms of, um, separate from decorum issues and more, um, campaign regulation issues. But we certainly could, um, could take a look at that and have more of a protocol in place.
Again, I'm not looking to amend the report, I think it was a good report, but again, at the end of the day, it's, I think, it's just an issue that we need to be cognizant of, that's all. I've just seen it more this year than I have ever seen it.
Right, and there really isn't anybody that's specifically designated to, uh, to address it. Again, members of our office have, have addressed things like that in the past, when it has come to our attention, but, um, uh, that's always something that, that we could, uh, look at down the road and give some thought, how best to, um, address it and who should do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
I think that makes a lot of sense, and just kind of following up, one of the, um, one of the issues that we encountered when the protest took place was, uh, myself, Counsel Kennedy and Counsel Cirillo, there was, it was so raucous, if you will, you know, how, who did we call? I think it falls off of Counsel Malanazza's point, who is going to enforce these rules? I mean, um, we ended up, I, I, we called the police, um, but, uh, I think it raises a good point, should these rules not be followed? Is it the chair? And at that time, the mayor wasn't there, it was the chair of the subcommittee. So, I, I think that when we do hear this in the subcommittee, I'm not trying to belabor the issue or, or get into too much of the weeds, but I do think it's important when and if this were to take place, who would restore civility or decorum or order. Um, so, Madam Solicitor, if you could think about who that would be, uh, and I, I think it would be important to include that in this proposed, proposed ru- rule change, so.
Sure, we will, um, I, I can expand the, it does make reference to the presiding officer or the committee chair, but I can make it clear that ultimate enforcement of all of these, uh, rules would be, would be managed by either the chair, i.e. the mayor, or a, the chair of a committee, with, with sometimes, unfortunately, the help of law enforcement.
Yeah, I think that's the important element, because Counsel Cirillo did shut the meeting down, but it continued, and then I guess that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have, uh, informational reports, CPA ballot question, Madam Manager.
Yes, in, in your packet, there is, um, an explanation, um, for the council and, and the public about, the council has voted to put this on the ballot, um, already for the next election, so there will be three ballot questions, two pertaining to the voting rights case, um, ranked choice voting or hybrid system, and then a third for, uh, the Community Preservation Act. The, in the, uh, packet is the question, um, which essentially asks, shall Lowell accept sections three to seven of chapter forty-four B, this, uh, of the general laws as approved by the council? And then the summary that explains what that is, and that is the Community Preservation Act, um, which would be funded by an excise of one percent on the annual tax levy on real property, beginning in twenty twenty. Um, it also explains in the summary that, uh, property occupied as a domicile of someone who qualifies as low-income housing or lower or moderate-income senior housing is exempt, and that the, um, class three commercial or four industrial properties, it explains the definition of a hundred thousand dollars of value. Um, and then lastly, uh, a taxpayer who receives a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a pro bono ra- ra- rata reduction in the, in the surcharge. So, what you see in the packet is the question that will be on the ballot, as well as the summary that will be explained on the ballot, so people will understand what the question means. You know, certainly no one would know three to seven inclusive of chapter forty-four B off the top of their head. So, the explanation is meant to assist voters on, on election day to understand what, what the, um, what the, uh, ballot question is asking them. So, just information for the council. We will also have this on the website and, and also publish this, uh, as we are doing with the other two ballot questions.
Counsel Kennedy?
Um, maybe you've already had a discussion about this, but, um, I agree with you that nobody's going to really know what sections three to seven, chapter forty-four B are, so that makes it be, I, um, I guess my question is, there are a lot of people that are familiar with the Community Preservation Act, so would that, could that be put into the question? That, that title, or is that, um, is that, is that too difficult to do?
I'll refer this to the solicitor's office, as, as far as the, you're talking about the title in the, in the summary?
The name of the act, yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually specified under state law that it has to be written exactly that way, and then the summary, there's a little bit more latitude, but the actual question is dictated to it.
So, could, could the, I, I think the question is in the summary, could we refer to as the Community Preservation Act?
Well, it's in the, it's in the summary.
But more prominently?
Yeah, more prominently, but are you saying then it can't, according to state law, it cannot be in the question? Is that what you're saying?
The state law reads that this is the way that it has to be written on the ballot, and it has the question written out exactly as it is. Eric may want to speak to it, too, but.
No, I, I can't elaborate much, which is the, but in the statute itself, the way, the method of adoption lists exactly how it has to be written on the ballot, and then...
And you'd like to deviate at all?
Yeah, that's, there's no, there's no, uh, gray areas, it just says, this is what has to be the question on the ballot. So, that's why we put it, that's why it's put prominently in the summary, but as you say, if they don't read the summary, they're just going to read the question, but we, I don't think we have a choice. I think the ballot is required to say what, what the, the statute says it's required to say.
But could we feature it more prominently, for instance, summary of Community Preservation Act, something that calls people's attention?
I would defer to, I don't know if that's a knowable answer right now, I defer to the city solicitor about how the summaries are supposed to be listed.
We can, uh, uh, circle back with the Secretary of State's office, um, and, um...
Why don't we, let us see if we can.
Run that question down.
I'm just concerned that a lot of people that might be in favor would just leave it blank, because they're not going to know what it is. And so, the easier way is just, don't touch it, which is not what we want people to do, right? We want people to vote either yes or no, so, um...
Right, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll reach out to the Secretary of State's office and see if that, if that change can be made, logical, it's a hundred percent logical.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
I, I, I do share, um, Counselor Kennedy, um, concerned, uh, you know, you put it in summary, I see it in summary, but, you know, if you can put it in the questions, somewhere in the questions, it certainly help, um, you know, and then they can come to the summaries, and some people don't read the summary. Just look at the questions, and, you know, with the question, they don't understand the question, they probably just say no to it. And in fact, they like the idea of having that, having the city participate in the Community Preservation Act, and, but, but not understand what it is and not read the summary, then they skip that part, and we lose that. So, if, if it's all possibility, you can go back to the Secretary of the State and check and see, maybe just put there, put a, a, a paragraph, I mean, eh, put it in there and put a, you know?
Right, understood. We will explore, uh, even if we cannot legally change the question, we will explore if there's any other change that can be made to the presentation that will still have the same effect of what we're, we're getting at, um, so that we're not just relying on this Rain Man kind of statutory citation.
Counsel Malanazza?
Just quickly, I, again, all good points are being brought up here, I, I was just wondering if the Lowell Sun was going to do a, um, a voters', um, piece this year, and if they were going to do a voters' piece, we could certainly get not only the vote, the voter write questions in, but this as well, so we could actually do, you know, we can make Eric a star and have him be interviewed by the newspaper to talk about what, you know, what the CPA actually will do for the community. So, I, I, again, I don't know if the Lowell Sun doing an election piece.
We aren't aware of, of that, but we'll, we will follow up, um, and see, or, or see if it's possible to do a piece on this.
Okay.
I have a firm answer, whether or not we're doing a little bit today, um, or answer this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And, and, and again, maybe, maybe, maybe some of the nonprofit housing groups and others that are very interested in the CPA would be willing to pay for a piece, I, I don't know, just, just a thought.
No, we'll bring that forward, thank you.
Let me, um, and this may be a little premature, I think we talked about it last week, about trying to do a direct mailer to... week about trying to do a direct mailer to voters, um, we, we have explored that in depth, um, we actually have a design for a mailer and, uh, which would go to every voting, uh, every voter in the city of Lowell, um, and it would have the ballot questions, the summary, as well as the Community Preservation, uh, Act question, so, um, it's gonna require an appropriation, um, but we, um, we're trying to finalize that. It seems to be one of the most effective ways we can come up with, that we can be sure every voter is reached, this would be an eight by eleven mailer from the city of Lowell, uh, and, and we're, as I said, there's, we, we have a, a, a mock-up that we're trying to finalize and, and price out.
Counsel, Counsel Kennedy?
I'm all set.
Then we have the park grant award.
Yes, um, so, again, informational, but, um, luckily, the city of Lowell, um, we're very pleased, received a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, park grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs in the, in, from the Commonwealth. Uh, this was in connection with an application for Hovey Playground and Park. Uh, I know we've talked about this playground previously here on the council floor, um, it is one of the, uh, playgrounds that is in much need of tender loving care, uh, it is, has the oldest, I think some of the oldest, if not the oldest, uh, playground equipment in the city on this, um, park, and so the plan is to make it a totally accessible, um, a, a park for children, uh, including children with any disabilities. Um, the cost, and I want to credit Planning and Development for working very hard on this plan, it would be the first park in the city that would be so accessible, um, so between the, uh, park grant of four hundred thousand dollars, uh, the cost is five hundred and seventy-five thousand, and, and Planning and Development has identified, um, the other hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to come from CDBG, is it, no, it's not CDBG.
From the Capitol.
Oh, from the Capitol Plan, okay. Um, but Lowell was one of twenty-three communities that received this park grant, um, seven point seven million in total, and we received four hundred thousand, so we're very, uh, happy to announce that. There will be a vote on next week's agenda for the council to accept, uh, and expend the monies, um, but good news for, for Hovey Playground, I know the neighborhood there has been very patient waiting for the park improvement, and I think Counsel Cirillo also had a motion on, in connection with Hovey Playground.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the place in file.
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Malinazzo. No, now we have communications from the city manager, request out of state travel development service, and one for Lowell Fire Department, I need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt, second.
Second by Counsel Conway, uh, roll call. Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo, Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott. Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier, Counsel Malinazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Seven years. All right, do we have any subcommittee reports? Next we have petition, National Grid slash Verizon, New England, request permission to relocate a J O pole at four ninety-three Market Street, I need a motion to refer to a public hearing on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, it's seven P M.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Conway. Next we have Crown Castle N G East LLC, request permission to extend existing fiber network on Westford Street down Technology Drive, I need a motion to refer to a public hearing on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, by Counsel Malinazzo, second by Counsel Conway. And finally, we have National Grid, request permission to install a, a scatter system to comply with latest safety standards at the intersection of Hale and Chelmsford Street, motion referred to a public hearing on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
And by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Malinazzo. Thank you. Now we have motions, first motion by Counsel Conway, request city manager report on new regulations for marijuana, social consumption sites, and home delivery, including what impact they may have on the city ordinance, and what options the city may have, I need a second.
Second.
By Counsel Noon, Counsel Conway.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think there was a, um, the Cannabis Control Commission came up with, um, a couple, uh, motions, and those motions were, uh, to have, uh, um, home delivery be allowed, and also the establishments where adults could use, um, marijuana together in a, in a social setting. I think that, um, I think this obviously comp- complicates the situation that we have, uh, you know, we're, we're just in the midst of taking a look at those, um, uh, retail stores, and trying to figure that out at this point, and, and I think we will probably all agree that it's a very complicated issue, and that's why we actually have a, a, a subcommittee that deals with this. So, uh, the, the point of this motion is to ask the, uh, ask you, uh, the city manager to, uh, take a look at it and find out, um, you know, what is our role in this, where are the limits, uh, what, what can we do and what can't we do, uh, because I believe at this point, there's, I think there's eleven states that legalize medical and recreational, um, marijuana, uh, in the United States, so, uh, when I, when I hear about the, the home deliveries, they're actually talking about, um, you know, there's a real problem with the, with robberies, because it's a cash business, and also the, the idea of identification, and actually the, the, the idea of bringing up drones, too, that, um, make the delivery, so it really complicates things, so I think that, uh, I really appreciate, uh, you know, letting the, the, um, the council know where, where our limits are. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
All right, well, I'll, I'll speak out to the, the manager, I, I think it's a good motion, but I'll, to the manager first.
No, I, I was gonna say, we can get a report, these are recent, um, regulations, as you point out, and it's, we, we will analyze, delve into it, and then bring back a report to the, to the council as to where we stand, these are new, um, initiatives in addition to the retail and medical marijuana.
Yeah, and I was just gonna follow up, that we're having challenges locating retail, never mind, and, and I don't support these, these cafes, marijuana cafes now, I think it's a recipe for, for more complications and, and disaster, so it'll be good to get ahead of this, and as we did in the past, and, and get an understanding, but also, you know, how we can, in my opinion, prevent these from locating in the city, I don't think we need them, thank you.
Thank you. All set. Next we have a motion by Counsel Mercy, request city manager find ways and means to put city hall clock back to full working order.
Second.
Second by Counsel Noon, motion speaks for itself.
Does that include this one, too?
Well, that's travel to Maine, we hope it's coming back, I look all the time, waiting for it to come in on time.
We did, I did see someone take it out, I'm hoping, I'll think I'm back with it. Next, uh, from Counsel Elliott, request city manager provide update on application to municipal vulnerability preparedness program, need a second.
Second.
By Counsel Leahy, Counsel Elliott?
The motion speaks for itself, I know that we applied, I know that there's, um, funding out there, so it'll be good to take the next step, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have a motion by Counsel Leahy, request city council begin the process to appoint a member to the Greater Lowell Vocational School Board to fill existing vacancy, need a second.
Second.
By Counsel Elliott, Counsel Leahy.
Um, motion speaks for itself, this, that, that should go fairly quick, right?
And we also got a ruling from the city solicitor, 'cause they changed the voting method, you know, citywide, but the process is the same, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
Again, I look, look forward to the process beginning, but I just would kind of put the question out that, depending upon when it happens, um, if it happens after the November fifth election, which it may, I just don't know, based upon our rules, if we then, as a lame duck council, can actually vote, or does it have to wait for the new council to come in? So I guess I just throw that out there for discussion, because again, if we, if we were gonna wait for any reason, uh, we, it might be an issue, and if not, we, you know, the sooner we begin, begin the process, the better. But that's just, that's just a question that, and again, I, I don't know if it would or wouldn't, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I think last time it took about two weeks, so it should move fairly quickly.
We just wanna make sure, ask the city manager to make sure it's advertised, uh, to the entire community, because this is an opportunity, we wanna make sure all groups know, are made aware of that opportunity. Thank you, Counsel Noon, you'll take that.
No, I, I do agree that this process need to, um, you know, we need to start looking, uh, but also, uh, we need to also let the word out there in term of, you know, whose interest in, you know, being appointed, so that we, I know that, um, I know three people already approached me, um, you know, I sat down with the three individual, it's good that show a lot of interest in, in this, because they care about the school, uh, so if we can just put the word out there and say, look, there's a, a, a position open Greater Lowell Voc, um, you know, going to be one year, is it one year, uh, remaining term of, uh, uh, school committee, um, and, um, you know, um, a, 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 Ray Booton, is it one year?
Till, till December of twenty twenty, I believe is the...
Okay, so, so, yeah, so maybe just put the word out there, that this process, this motion is a good motion to, to have the processes starting, it's a good thing.
Madam Manager?
Uh, just a quick question, so we, so we do post for boards and commissions, um, I guess, just looking for direction from the council, if, if you would like us to post, uh, and then the duration, I guess, just so, uh, I think the process is, if someone's interested, they could send a letter to the city clerk, uh, and then, uh, so we could, we could post in a similar manner, I, I just wanna be clear...
So how long would you normally post for?
Yeah, I mean, that's the question.
I just give two weeks.
Sometimes we post until filled, depending on what the position is, this one would be time sensitive, I would think, so.
Right.
So could we do a two-week posting and then vote on the twenty-second? Are we, we have a meeting?
Madam Solicitor.
Sure.
Yeah.
We do that.
Oh, two-week process, then we'll see how many candidates we have, then decide.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a few days to decide, and then we'll vote on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth.
Right. We, we did get, um, a communication from one candidate this evening, I don't know if the city clerk got it, but we actually all got one, so, um...
So we, we will post and then with a description and to send a letter of interest to the city clerk, is that, okay.
Do we want to take a vote on the night we vote, or do we not do that?
Let me see what we have, it's, it's, we can, we can let you know next week, and we can take, we can take the, at the, the meeting for the clo- the closing week, we could make that decision.
But when will we get the answer on the twenty-second, though, or the fourteenth? I mean, the fifteenth or the twenty-second, when will we get the information, I think, through you to the manager?
Well, I mean, we, we could post tomorrow, if the desire is to post for two weeks, we can do that, if the letters go...
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we post tomorrow for two weeks, and we vote on the twenty-second.
Well, this has to be joint school committee and council, so, and then share the information with the, with the school committee.
Sure, I'll bring this to the school committee tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counsel Noon?
Roll.
Right, um, Mayor Samaris requests city manager instruct proper department to install speed monitor signs on Aiken Avenue, do you hear a second? Second by, uh, Counsel Malinazzo, Mayor Samaris.
Uh, the motion speaks for itself, but I have to say, uh, when I was, some of the people had asked me to look into this, I did go up there to, and I went to pull off on the side, and, uh, they do drive kind of fast there, and it's, it's needed, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Samaris, our next motion is Mayor Samaris' motion requesting the city manager to instruct the proper department to provide an update regarding the status of the city adopted an island program, second by Counsel Malinazzo, Mayor Samaris.
No, um, I was, you know, when you're driving through the city, I, I've noticed a lot of these islands in disrepair, but lately, there seems to be some attention being paid, which is very, very good, I mean, because this was a, a beautiful idea, and this really helped the city, especially the various entrance ways into the neighborhoods and the cities, so I'd like a report as to, you know, if there are any issues that this council could be supportive of. Madam Manager?
Madam Manager?
Thank you, we'll, we'll get you a full report, Shawna Forseer has, um, taken over this, uh, responsibility, has contacted people who had previously, um, agreed to adopt an island, trying to update, make certain they're still, uh, interested, and find out what they're going to do, uh, and then, uh, we're also trying to, if there's, uh, individuals who either aren't responsive or, uh, not interested, to try and reallocate or reassign, so, but we will have a full report for you, it is, um, it, it is something that Shawna has been working on.
Okay, apparently her intercession is working, because like I said, you know, at the beginning of the summer, didn't see much action, but all of a sudden, I'm, I'm very spots of the city, I mean, there's been some really nice changes.
And, and I think some, either entities may have forgotten or it slipped through the cracks, they weren't quite aware their sign was there, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor Samaris, motion request the city manager provide an update regarding ongoing project being completed in cooperation between the city of Lowell and UMass Lowell, second by Counsel Malinazzo, Mayor Samaris.
All right, uh, the thing is, I was able to see a meeting that, uh, city manager had with, uh, Chancellor Maloney and her staff and city staff, and I was very impressed with a, a lot of the work that has been done, Madam Manager, between yourself and, and Chancellor Maloney, and I think it's behoves us to make sure that every council member and, uh, citizens become aware of the real partnership that we have with the university that's working, it's working for both sides, I mean, I'm very impressed with the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, we, we, uh, we've been very fortunate to have, um, cooperation on a number of fronts with the university, um, and, uh, we'll contact them about making a presentation with, with both the city and the university side to the council.
Thank you.
Any announcement, Madam Manager?
No, I'll wait.
Counsel, Mayor Elliott?
Um, thank you, the, uh, assistant clerk brought up a communication regarding Lowell celebrates Kerewak, apparently there was something on the agenda, um, but the individual couldn't make it, um, Judith Bissett, but she did drop a letter off, um, just to thank us for allowing her, or this information to, uh, be brought up at the October first council meeting, she was unable to attend, um, but they wanted to just, uh, have me read that there'll be a presentation by Mr. Eric Deckers of the Kerewak Writers and Residence Project of Orlando, Florida, as part of the annual Kerewak Festival. Um, Ms. Bissett will note the impetus behind Mr. Deckers coming to Lowell was a resolution passed last February, the call for the city Lowell to explore partnership with Orlando Kerewak Project, uh, so Mr. Deckers' presentation will be at Palladium Memorial Library Friday, October tenth, at three thirty.
Let's see, an announcement?
Thank you, Counsel Elliott, um, Madam Manager?
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, and I, I just wanted to share a communication I received a few weeks back, there was a, uh, issue that I think Counsel Mercy brought forward about Burnham Road and the condition at the, on the embankment, um, down by the river, with trash there, um, and, uh, I, I do know that, uh, Development Services went out in DPW and didn't, um, saw some, but didn't see exactly the amount of trash that we had pictures of, uh, and then I received a letter from the resident out on, on the street, uh, saying that, uh, on, on Saturday morning of September fourteenth, uh, they had a pleasant surprise, two young men were cleaning up the trash along the riverbank, uh, she asked them if they are from the city of Lowell, but they said no, but they had heard about this from a city council meeting, and she said they, um, uh, fished along the river and they were, um, decided to clean up the area. So, uh, with a pickup truck, their new gloves and trash, oversized trash bags, um, they, uh, swiftly cleaned up the area, um, that was very difficult to get to down in Embankment, she asked for their names, and they were Jack Leahy and his friend Sean Sullivan, so thank you to our young volunteers, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Leahy's father knew what he was up to, but anyway.
That's wonderful.
So thank you to, the neighborhood said they are, uh, very grateful for their action, and, uh, wanted me to share this, and, um, and also, we are grateful to them for their, their work, so, uh, DPW and Inspection Services will monitor this, I wanna let the, uh, let the neighbors know, but when they showed up, uh, the work had been done, so, thank you to them.
Wonderful, new, um, motion to adjourn, Counsel Conway, second... Counsel Conway, second Counsel Milonazo. Meeting adjourned.